I'm going to continue the public session. The executive session litigation, RIGL 42-46582, Four Corners, has been continued until after the public session. Approval of consent agenda. Approval of executive session meeting minutes of May 29, 2018. Approval of executive session meeting minutes of May 14, 2018. Receipt of minutes from the filing boards and commissions. The prevention coalition committee, planning board two, cemetery commission, and the senior center newsletter. Correspondence received and filed. Buryville Town Council resolutions in support of H. 8120A and S. 2905 related to the Energy Facilities Sitting Act. Susan Gill administrative officer for planning board may activity report. Town administrator, police and fire overtime reports for May. Town administrator, May monthly department reports. Would anyone from the council like to pull anything through the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the entirety of the consent agenda.
Motion's been made.
Second. All those in favor? Do I have anything open forum? No. Open public forum announcements, comments, questions, presentation. Linda Larson, give the date, July 27, 28, and 29. Approval for weekend events.
We did, yeah, before you got here.
Before you got here, you missed it.
You can do it if you want, Tony.
If you want me to do it again, Tony, well. Hi, Linda.
Hi. It's that time of year again, so we're coming before you to request approval for the Tiverton Days celebration, July 27, 28, 29. We are once again asking and requesting it to be a town-sponsored event as approved last year. Committee has been meeting. All open meetings have been held at the library, and if anyone wants to attend, our next meeting is this Thursday at 6:30. Same setup as years past, a little bit of variation in the schedule. But we do still meet all the requirements of it being on town property, accessible and open to all, as well as all events being free. I've met with the Tiverton Police Department, the Fire Department, as well as the DPW, and along with the town administrator this morning. The recreation committee, we are due to on their, we're on their agenda to meet with them tomorrow. They had to cancel their meeting last week and move it due to some business travel. So if you review the schedule, and I provided you with a backup document of events. The Friday evening, we're requesting, at this point, both Picasset Field as well as the high school for a potential location due to the Grinnell's Beach being closed. We are also requesting a sound variance on Friday evening because of band. We're going beyond acoustics, and it will be amplified, so sound variance is being requested. Same food trucks as the prior year. If it's being held at Picasset, there will not be a bonfire. If it's being held at the high school, there will, might potentially be a bonfire, subject to fire marshal and fire chief, as well as school approval. So that's Friday evening. Unfortunately, no lighted flotilla because we're, obviously, we're not down, down at the beach. Saturday, parade as scheduled, staging at 9:00. You have the parade route as well as the staging area diagram, exactly the same as in years past. Step off is at 10:00, and the parade will run from Family Ties to Lil Bear, which is roughly 1.6 miles. In the afternoon, we're looking at a family activity at the library in conjunction and partnership with the Tiverton Arts Council, and it will be a family and children's activity with painting and storytelling, and very similar to the activities in the past with Mrs. Pelletier leading, leading that effort. Sunday, we've held beach yoga down on Grinnell's Beach. Turnout's been about 30, 45 people, give or take. I do know that the beach is closed. However, I am requesting that you do open, if applicable, and safety has all been met, and DPW agrees to those conditions, between 8:00 and 9:30 to hold beach yoga on early Sunday morning in conjunction with Coastal Roasters Coffee like we've done in the past. I am requesting from the rec committee both Grinnell's Beach as well as Fogland Beach as a backup location if that request does not get, get approved or granted. In the afternoon, as in years past, the Tiverton Fire Department is planning their family open house, very well attended by families in the past. I think we had about 175 children, and families go through there last year, and that would be 10 to 2 at the Tiverton Fire Department Main Road Station. So the location change on Friday is, is a change from years past. Amplification of a band versus an acoustic act, act is a change. We are not having the movie night on Saturday night. Feedback from last year, it was just a lot for families, and it was a lot for the committee. There were a number of events, you know, one right after the other. So we'd like to move that movie night potentially in conjunction with another event that will held, potentially maybe with the bonfire if we can't have it, or our fall festival when we do the pumpkins. So something, something like that. So it's a change as well. Other than that, we do have the parade forum filled out, the state-approved one that needs to be signed by the, the police chief and submitted to the state. Any permitting for the food vendors? We have those applications, as well as the health and safety food license that's required, so we're aware of that, you know, as well.
Now, as far as the sound variance, they don't have to be put on another agenda, because do we approve that?
Right.
So that'll have to be advertised for the, so it'll be...
If she has the location, you need the location for it, obviously, once she gets it.
Yeah, but that's, because it's here, which I see.
Yeah, it is, and I, because of the rec committee being...
It's in the catch of what Tiverton does.
Yeah, and because of the, of the rec committee moving, meeting being moved, that was, that was what, you know, why we're...
Yeah, so we'll just focus on the next one.
The next one. And then the, the other thing is, is always, you know, money. So we do have a balance carryover from last year with an additional couple donations that came in. We do have sponsors lined up for this year as well, so we'd be covering the costs of, you know, the band or, or any of the other, you know, incidentals as we did last year as well, and we provided you with a, with a post-report, and we would do that again also.
You guys paid for the police and fire details, didn't you?
We paid for whatever, yeah, whatever charges. We paid for the DPW overtime. We paid for DPW overtime because they moved the pallets for us, they had additional barrels, they had to do a pickup on Saturday morning of the trash, so there was additional, additional charges for DPW.
And there was a police detail also.
We paid a police detail, I want to believe, for the movie night, and...
Yeah, the movie night, because they were all there, remember?
Again, I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't remember. I'd have to, I'd have to go back. I know that the...
But that's all going to be arranged anyway, to make sure.
Yeah, whatever, whatever charges, I mean, that's, however, we had talked about this last year regarding this being a town-sponsored event, and those costs being absorbed by the community, by the town, but for those types of services. But again, we're, we're requesting, you know, that it be a town-sponsored event, and we cover. Yeah, there was a, there was a, actually, Councilor Edwards, you know, talked about potentially putting in a budget, and I know it didn't get put in the budget, and things are incredibly tight, so we will cover the additional costs, whatever is, is needed for those services.
Yeah, I was just asking, because I wasn't sure what you paid for last year. I'm sure we got it, but I don't remember. Now, yoga at Grinnell's Beach, is there a safety issue with letting people in there? With, there's barriers right now. You cannot get in there without climbing over the fence.
I looked at it this morning. There is one way to get to the beach that doesn't have to take you through the construction area, which is actually stepping over where the guardrail goes down, and it's going right by the fence to the beach.
Right, and does have to be planted.
You're not the only one, I think.
But is there a liability to, to not have a clear access there? And people have to climb over guardrail? I'm just asking.
Which is like knee-high at that, that point, but...
Does it put a temporary ramp or something?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm wondering. Should we, can we move it, or can we somehow provide a better access to it?
What I can do is...
To Fogland, but I understand that...
I can work with DPW to see if there's any other place where we could temporarily open the fence, but it's not as easy as it sounds.
Oh, I know. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because if somebody hurts, I know it's only knee-high.
Would it be possible to...
But if somebody falls over it, and there wasn't a clear...
Would it be possible to unbolt a section of that guardrail so they can walk through there, and then put it back when we're, when we're done?
The state owns that, don't they?
What's that?
Isn't the state own that?
Yeah, well, but I mean...
We're talking about, talking about the state, this is actually a very complicated issue when it comes to liability. There's an interplay between the state and the town. There's a question about whether or not the recreational use statute applies here. There's also a question about whether or not this is an open and obvious defect. And then there's a question about whether or not the town is negligent for allowing people to get into this situation where there's likely to be an accident. So there's, there's a couple of moving parts here. It's not, not that easy to say. To me, the question is less liability, you know, ultimately, but, you know, whether or not you're putting people in a position where they might get hurt, and there's a good risk of them doing that, and do you want to, want to actually do that? It's just something you got to think about.
I'm just asking, because it is... Go ahead, yeah.
I would suggest that perhaps you ask me to work with DPW to look at the situation, make sure that there is a safe way to get to the beach one way or another, and it also should satisfy the solicitor.
Can I ask one question, Joe, about that? Is there a, since there's no parking at Grinnell's, is there a parking plan for the folks who want to...
The town owns a paper lot behind the Red Dory, and that's the parking lot that we would advise folks to use. And it's from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. on Sunday morning.
Oh, behind it, that...
Behind the Red Dory, there's a grass lot, and it's a town-owned parking, well, it's a town-owned paper lot, and that's where we used on Friday evening as well last year, and that's where we would advise people to park. We certainly wouldn't advise them to park in anyone's business, you know, lot location or on the street for permitting, and I know there's stickers through that neighborhood.
Well, I'm sure the recreation's going to have some talk about having it at, goodness, because it's Fogland also, and see what they conclude.
She's going before the recreation...
Tomorrow.
Is Fogland not an option? Is that not a good option?
It's further away. It doesn't connect to Coastal Roasters, who is also sponsoring, you know, you get a free coffee, and, you know, Nana Quocket Yoga is volunteering her time. It's, it's just a better centrally-located location for it. If it has to be moved this year, if it's not safe for public, it's not accessible for all, we certainly understand, but I am requesting the hour and a half from 8:00 to 9:30 to get folks out of there and over to Coastal Roasters, if, if possible.
So you'll work with, in conjunction with the recreation committee and Tony?
Yes.
And you'll work with Linda regarding that?
And we may need a little help from DPW to...
Yeah.
Create something that's safe passage, so...
Yeah, I'm just, I just don't want anyone to get hurt.
No, no, yeah, yeah, subject, subject to safety is the, our number-one concern.
But there must, there might be a way. Any other questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on anything?
We need to approve these events, subject to recreation, right? Approve them.
Approve as town-sponsored event.
As a town-sponsored...
I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So make a motion, yeah.
So may I ask one question, just to clarify, because I think I asked this last year, and I just want to be clear. What does "town-sponsored" mean? Because it's not something we do all the time. So what, what does that mean, when we call it "town-sponsored"?
I'll give it a first try. In my opinion, it simply means that the town recognizes that this is a good event for the community and likes to support it, and by being a sponsored event, it becomes eligible for some preferential treatment, if, if you will, in terms of what needs to be paid by the organizers to the town as well. I think that was the issue that was addressed, and the insurance, right.
They piggyback on the trust, like, the trust policy for the town.
Yes, I understand it's going to be the tulip program this year for that.
Oh, it is.
Yes, but this allows that to happen.
Okay. And then, and I'm sorry to be picky about this, but I just want to be clear, only because I went through this with the fundraising for Grinnell's Beach, so is the account, are the funds held here, or did Linda, you hold the funds privately in your entity's account, and then we, how does that...
No, the funds are held here. We, we have an account with the town treasurer, and the account number is...
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah, we have, I don't, no, the funds are held here. We submit the invoice for reimbursement. If there's a, if there's an invoice, really good example last year for the movie contract, you know, we had deposited all those sponsor checks, and we submitted the invoice for reimbursement.
Okay.
And the treasurer paid that out?
Yes.
So one question, only because we ran into this with Grinnell's, where there is an account here for Grinnell's as well, and that, you know, donations were made out to the town of Tiverton. There were certain entities that we could not accept donations from, because either they were coming in front of the council, or coming to the town wanting something, or there is, there is some current legal situation. Does that need to, I don't know in a town-sponsored event, does that matter, not matter?
And I haven't had a chance to talk with Linda about this, but I did have a conversation about it today, and based on that, I think it might be, would be good if we could talk about a different solution, i.e., a different place where the monies to be held, whether that happens this year, or at least in coming years. Just looking at what the different options are to keep a clean separation might be worthwhile, but that's a surprise to Linda, because I didn't, hadn't thought about this when we talked this morning, so...
So Tiverton celebrates as a filed not-for-profit, and we do have an account with a balance of $25 to keep it open at Bank Newport, so if need be.
That's what I figured, yeah.
You know, there...
Yeah, because last year, we ran into the casino, but this year, it wouldn't be a problem with the casino.
It wouldn't be a problem. So I, again, we do have an account here. I don't know if the clearance of who's giving us money versus, you know, I mean, it's, it's individuals, it's businesses.
If it's all right with everybody, and I apologize that we weren't able to arrange all this beforehand, but I think I can work with the treasurer and Linda to work out, you know, what the procedure will be from here on.
In all honesty, I, I think for control and transparency, I mean, having an account with the town, and those funds aren't held in a separate not-for-profit if this is a town-sponsored, if there's, you know...
I think the transparency can be addressed. There is a, just a tricky little legal issue with the source of donations, and to what extent that become, could become a problem for the town, and I hadn't thought of that before, but I think it's a legitimate concern that we're better off addressing.
Okay. So, and this would be the same for any other, any other program, any other recreation committee, or...
A recreation committee is a town entity, and that makes it different right there, but there may well be issues in terms of, you know, if, if the committee does fundraising, if a similar issue comes up that we would need to look at, but this is really because you remain your own nonprofit entity for a variety of reasons, it would actually be better for everybody involved, I think, to keep the finances different. You, the transparency can also come through your reports, which I think is a, is a great arrangement. Now, the proactive report and the post-event report, you can really include a lot of that information, including about details and, you know, what was paid by whom for what.
So you're saying not making it a town-sponsored?
I think that's still town-sponsored, because you don't necessarily charge, you know, full fees or anything like that, so...
But can't Linda just, when she gives, when she gets these donations, just, okay, it was someone here to make sure that that person or entity is okay?
I personally no objection to it. Someone approved it earlier, so it was done this way last year. It's just I think that Councilwoman Hilton raises a legitimate concern with the source of donations, and to what extent that could come back to bite us, so to speak.
So the vote here tonight can still remain a town-sponsored event? Okay. And the financial part of this will be arranged between all of you?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Tiverton Days as a town-sponsored event, and direct the administrator to work with Linda and the committee to sort out the financial issue, as well as ask the administrator to work with the solicitor and DPW director to sort out the Grinnell's versus Fogland debacle as it pertains to the beach yoga.
Also with the recreation committee?
Also with the recreation committee. Subject to approval from the rec committee.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
I'm marching, ready to go.
Hope you're all prepared. Sorry, thank you. Conservation Commission, Thomas Malinsky, underground storage tanks, a very grave environmental threat in Tiverton, Solicitor memorandum regarding local regulatory options. Tom?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Ramatowski, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. We have a presentation for you here tonight being set up, and while Tom's setting it up over there, let's give you a very brief introduction to what the presentation will be about. As the title implies, it's about underground storage tanks, but not the ones we're typically here about, which are septic-related. These are now underground metal tanks. People installed them back in the old days when we were having the price shocks for oil, 70s, a long time ago, and they're used to store oil and other sorts of fuel. And as you know, the Conservation Commission is responsible for keeping you abreast of issues related to water, keeping our water pure, keeping our water in good shape, both surface and underground. And as we did more and more research on this topic, we found that it is really, really a concern that we should have as a town, because as you'll see in the presentation, there are lots of these things that were put in 30, 40 years ago. They're all ticking time bombs, potentially still full of fuel or partially full of fuel, could leak at any time, causing a real environmental disaster, especially in the parts of town that depend on well water for their drinking water. Or if it happened near our reservoir, like Stafford Pond, we could be in big trouble too. So I guess we're, we're still being set up, but that's the gist of the, the introduction that I wanted to give on this. Tom Malinsky, who'll be giving it, has done a lot of research on this topic and worked with Rhode Island DEM as well, so hopefully we're able to...
I think we're looking for something.
I think we're looking for the clicker.
Oh, okay.
But I think you can click...
Unless you're feeling especially tall and can reach the button.
Oh, that too, all right, no. Michael Jordan in the audience?
No, we had a cabinet that had the control. The cabinet was right there.
The cabinet that's over there, it's underneath, it's right behind over here.
Oh, it's over, yeah, they rolled it back there.
Yeah, they reeled it out for the... No, it's good, it's on wheels, it comes out so they can set up the system.
There it is.
Good call, John. We're going to have to put a stovetop on it and stick it next to the sound. We got it. So we're on? Yeah. Councilwoman Hilton's wrecking the whole joint.
Why can't you just leave your kid?
This is exercise.
I told you she was...
I'm going to build my chair over here.
It's a wheelchair.
Should we dim the lights a little bit, or?
We're working on that now.
Beautiful.
Did you want to move closer? No. I'm going closer to Joe. It's a little bit easier.
Okay, so we're ready to roll, and without any further delays, introduce Tom Malinsky from our commission, who's our expert on this topic, who's going to give you the talk tonight, which is, again, underground storage tanks, a very grave environmental threat in Tiverton, and actually throughout the entire state.
No, oh, there it is. Yeah, never mind, I'm sorry. Well, good evening, everybody, town council. Thank you for sharing your precious time this evening to talk about this very special topic. I think we have to concern ourselves with, usually I start a presentation with like a upbeat discussion or a small story, but it's looking at, as I say, very grave. It is an issue that we have to rework with, and I think if we can work collaboratively together as a team, eventually, we can come up with a solution to this. This was a long story, this meeting, many, long history. My, 31 years ago, I sat in this seat, and my coworker, Dick Miles, came and presented at the town council, and we were able to get a ordinance passed, which no longer allowed USTs to be installed inside, in the town. Of course, even, and there was also a registration program, of course, as I'll discuss later on. So we're here tonight to, I think, fulfill what I was hoping to do, would get, totally remove all of the tanks eventually, and I hope the presentation will help us look at it in that light. So we'll continue on with this, and as, I'd like to refrain possibly from questions until we get to the end, because I'll streamline the presentation, and I'll keep my thoughts in continuity, so if you don't mind that, we could have all of that at that point. So I wanted, the goal was to sum me of the meeting, discuss the UST, environmental crisis in Tiverton, review the EM regulations, discuss failure modes, real-world examples. I made, we made some recommendations as a team, and we have, and we'll be questions. We're the final goal of working together and collaboratively to find a viable solution to this very critical environmental issue. Sorry to disappoint. Right now, based upon a fire department, an oil tank license spreadsheet, there are 207 plus or minus unknown USTs in Tiverton, many installers, Tom mentioned during the oil embargo days. 207, I say known. I know of instances where tanks, I looked at the list, I knew people who had underground storage tanks, and they never were listed. I know that list is probably outdated, and we'll address that later on, but as, at least 207 that is on that list. Leakage of the tanks can impact our fractured bedrock aquifer that, as we have in our town, the granite bedrock, and the water sheds are called Stafford and Ackroyd Pans, and all it takes is one gallon of fuel oil or gasoline to contaminate 1 million gallons of drinking water. That's all it takes. So it's quite a, quite a aggressive contaminant with regards to water. Current DEM regulations, they do not address heating oil tanks, residential farm with less than equal to 1,100 gallons, whereas any other thing above, above 1,100 gallons, DEM does regulate them, and any other fuel other than heating oil, gasoline, diesel, kerosene, K1 kerosene, now that has some steroids, they regulate all of them, no matter what capacity. But if you look at, again, based upon an 1,100-gallon tank, you could, potentially, a leak could make 1 billion 1,100, 100 million gallons of water not drinkable. That's how, such an issue that we have to contend ourselves with. And the issue is, we're dealing with some tanks potentially underground for 40 years right now, so you know there's a very good possibility, some may be leaking, and we do not know that, because there may be a public air, public water supply where it is leaking, and it's not bothering perhaps that immediate area. They usually fail in terms of the rust perforation mechanisms, it's usually from the inside out. Moisture combines with the interior tank sediment, it's usually at the bottom of the tank. Ask any fisherman, they'll tell you that they're, that fuel tanks, there's always bacteria that's under the bottom of them, and sediment, because fuel oil, number-two fuel oil, it's a dirty fuel. And it combines with bacteria and constituents like sulfur and forms a crude acid, and bacteria living at the water-oil interface creates digestive, digest organics and excretes acids. So you have this acidic solution at the bottom, and it does eventually cause perforation of tanks, and the same applies to above-ground tanks. And I'll just show a small presentation, a single slide on that, too. Here's an example from a DEM publication of a tank, and, you know, we... And, you know, they talk about the inside-out, but you can tell that perhaps the interaction of acid soils and acid rains, that's an example of a tank that they, of course, condemned and it took out of the ground. And usually, they say, if it's just a pinprick-sized hole, will leak about 400 gallons of fuel per year. And that's not, you know, for some people, if they're running a lot of fuel during heating season, they may not detect that. And that's the problem. In above-ground tanks, some people do have a outside. They actually, in cold climates, they breathe. The sun hits them and it causes contraction and expansion. And air enters from the vent pipe, bringing moisture in. And moisture then combines with the sediment at the bottom. As was said before, an acid sludge is formed. And there also could be rust spillage from, from above or bad gutter that's filled up and it fills, puts water over the vent pipe and brings it inside the tank. So these are, one of the prime examples, as you hear. Here's a February 18 newsletter from DEM. They had emergency response spills of 570, resulted in that 530 gallons of oil being recovered, 723 tons of oil spill debris. And residential oil spills accounted for 30%. Now, oil spills can be both spills when you're trying to fill a tank, the tank actually burst because they put high-pressure fuel into it, about 100 pounds. And the DEM person told me they sometimes caused the tanks to fail, the outside tanks, the 275-gallon tanks. And now they're made very thinly-made metal. They really can, once they're rusted, they just can't take the abuse anymore. So this is this concern we should have with even the outside's tanks. And of course, who assumes the responsibility? It's the homeowner. If something leaks in time in their yard and causes contamination. Here's an example of leak-proof solution. I'm not endorsing a Roth company because these are double walls, which can be used to prevent any leakage outside. You can use inside the house. And I know a couple of people, I know one that has three tanks, coupled with, two of them. The bottom line is, it's the ideal solution to prevent a leak and it'll capture it before it goes into your basement or in somewhere in your yard and cause contamination. Here's an example of heating oil contaminations in Rhode Island. You probably don't, when I mention this individual, Dick Miles, myself, Dick lived on Montgomery Street, 1984. Was undisclosed UST-linked. No one knows really where, as far as I know, is, no one said where it originated from. But the neighborhood was out, without drinkable water for seven years. They had the, the National Guard, I think they call them water dogs, outside this street. And they were using that to drink water. And it required a $5-million bond to, for installation, which eventually Florence Avenue and Montgomery Street was able to get water, town water, after all that time. Tiverton, early 80s, this was a friend of mine, interior tank leak. It was embedded in cement. He had a plugged-up line, the oil coming decided, well, let me, we'll blow air in it and burst the, burst the pipe under the cement. And he had remediation costs of $80,000 at the dig all the way around his foundation. So it was quite an expense at that time. And here's an example of an incorrect, in Dr. JP's dental practice, 366 gallons and a remediation cost of about $1.5 million. So here we, here's examples of really large costs, which I'll show a subsequent sheet on that also. And Warwick, this was in 2014, an interior tank leak. Remediation cost was $150,000 to clean up and eventually demolished the house and the people moved away. They didn't figure it was not worth it. There's more examples of leaks, but I was able, these are some of the ones that had some, I had actual data from. Here's an example of replacement. If you wanted to just, this is a simple replacement. This is a middle town friend of mine, two tanks, 275 regular steel tanks. He put one Roth in, the cost was, take away the tanks, remove the residual oil that was left over, $2,500, which isn't bad compared to what it could be there for cleanup. Here's a Tiverton one, one tank, 275 gallons, one Roth, 1,700. And this is one where we just removed the tank and we never replaced, $375. That's not big cost, too, when you're trying to fix a potential environmental problem. I received this call from Ababa Environmental. That was the same firm that cleaned up Dr. JP's facility at the dentist's office. If it's not leaking, the chief of, if it's less than 1,100 gallons, the chief of the Fire Department is notified. And the only cost would be about $1,800 to $2,100. If a UST, underground storage tank with limited surrounding soil contamination, he says, will cost between $15,000 to $25,000. And anything above a large area, $100,000-plus. So you can see why the dentist, Dr. JP, had a $1.5-million-type because it was extensive contamination. So I can, as you can see, clearly the proactive removal is the most cost-effective option. You can, that's, anyone could see that. Some of the proactive measures that have been taken by the Heating Oil Delivery Service, one delivery service sent a certified letter to those customers saying they will no longer deliver heating oil to a home utilizing UST. One of the examples in there where my friend had two tanks removed, he was the one who received the letter from the Tiverton Oil Firm, who said, they thought he had a UST and he really didn't. He had those two tanks in the basement. But they were telling him, they're not gonna take responsibility anymore. They told the customer, we're stopping. And there's a Tiverton plumber, an oil burner service firm, stated they will no longer service heating equipment with a concealed, under-cement, heating oil line. Because again, they do not, do not want to take the same responsibility that if it leaks, someone has to clean it up and someone has to pay for it, and that's the homeowner. I spoke to my, my, my insurance company and they will no longer issue policies to a home with a UST, as well as real estate agents, actually, if one is selling a home with a UST, they do want, they want it removed. This, for the non-believers, and I suspect there were probably, could have been some non-believers here this evening, this is an old February 2008. And I tried to call, they actually had a number in the, in the, on the internet, but they never answered the phone that rang. There was, represents 1,883 contaminated sites. And this was related to fuel oil tanks in Rhode Island. Summary, I, we as a team, the Conservation Committee, say it is a major environmental concern for the public in drinking water supplies, both public as well as the private wells. And I love Tiverton to take the lead because the state truly does not, is not taking the lead when it comes to the, anything less than 1,100 gallons. And I ask anybody here, in the event of a major UST leak, how could the town fund the public's water supply to residents of Tiverton Four Corners? Took seven years to get the $5-million bond to help Florence Street and Montgomery Street people out. This would be tremendous amount of money to try to go through all alleged that's in Tiverton to bring it down to Four Corners. It would never happen. So people would be out, without water for many years. And so this is the big issue that I think we have to take a hold of and say, how do we resolve it? So there's some recommendations from the town and we need to work with this as a team. This is something that was put out now because you always want to have recommendations and, and options. This probably could be called options and then a true recommendation. But I think we cannot, as a Conservation Committee, make the true recommendation. We have to work with the team members here, the council. But request that we re-register all the tanks. As I said before, I know people did not even register. You know, people, some people in Tiverton are independent and they won't follow the rules. So I think we need to get that list upgraded. Jan has a copy of it. I gave him a scanned copy of it. I, and it's inside the safe, I know, in the office. Include both commercial and residential. Get the installation day sizes and contents. The Tiverton Fire Department could generate a database. It's a simple expel, spread, spreadsheet. And, and talk about if it was, find out if it was in use or abandoned or removed. Being abandoned in a place where they maybe filled it with sand or some slurry, cement slurry. Send certified letters to known Tiverton Patrol and Delivery Service to tell them, if you have, know of ESTs, you have to inform us. Because maybe that's the only way you're gonna find out. People in their backyards will not tell you they have a UST. And the Tiverton Conservation Committee and Tiverton Fire Department could collaboratively develop an information sheet to tell what people need to do to safely remove the USTs. We need to validate, of all 1,100-gallon USTs are in fact registered by DEM. I was able to get a sample from DEM of three tanks. One of them in South Tiverton, 4,000 gallons. One in, two in North Tiverton, of 1,000 gallons each. And one at a elderly home. And I'm saying the elderly home one because they have the best tank ever. Perfect drawings that have a dual-wall tank. It was done professionally. The one in South Tiverton, it shows the house, which someone took a pencil, said, drew a kind of irregular rectangle tank. That's all the data I received on this date. So I don't trust some of the stuff that DEM stuff. In fact, the two tanks, 1,000 gallons each in North Tiverton, the only, on an Excel spreadsheet that they provided me, only shows one tank. The other one is not there, there. But when I get a data call from them, they showed me two tanks. So who knows really is what is involved and are they really up to date? So we need to try to find out what they do. And if it's upgraded to 1,100 gallons, where's the test data? I did not find any test data at all in any of the data that I received from that data call. I would love, our team would love to see a regulation to remove all USTs residential and farm in two years. Because we have tanks that's been in there since the oil embargo days and it just doesn't make sense to have them in the ground anymore. And inform the, in the heating oil service companies. I believe it's now, the building inspector would not allow in cement lines in Tiverton. But there's a lot of people with old installations that it's still there. And we were wondering if the town could consider low-interest UST removal loan, like the failing septic tank system. If that could be used to have low-interest loans to help people out with, for, say, put a $2,000 Roth tank in and remove the old one. This is a DEM deadline for single wall, December 2017. Everything that's greater than 32 years old. Now, the tanks in North Tiverton, one was installed in 1960. But the fact that it's 1,000 gallons, it's bypassed because it says its heating oil is not included. And I truly believe it's, I was, it's poor engineering judgment on a part of DEM, perhaps, into this type of thing where you'd say, oh, it's okay, you can use heating oil or political convenience. And you have to be honest, I put that in for a reason because I believe it should not have, it is something they should be addressing. And I think we can help them as a team to try to set the example and they will sometime, I was told by one DEM official, if you set the example, we will follow you, like happened with some, that we'll do about septic systems. And a final word from the Sierra Club, leaking USTs are a grave threat to American groundwater. And we're not the only state. If you go to Maine and New Hampshire, there's quite a, it has the same situation. And we need to, they can get a hold of it. And I think our goal would be is, if Tiverton could set the example in the state of Rhode Island and say, we have to remove them, that would be the ideal situation. And maybe the state would say, anything less than 1,100 gallons has to be regulated more, in a, in a better manner. So, and I want to ask this, so we're informing you tonight of this, this environmental concern. Is the town liable if, in fact, someone's tank leaks and a neighbor has and say, well, why didn't you have them informed?
No.
No. I'm just asking, that's all.
The state and federal law, liability is always on the homeowner.
Okay, that's what I would...
Not under the control.
No, that's fine. I wanted to find that out. That was not to be create tension here. I wanted to just find out, but thank you.
I think it's just giving you...
Yeah. And then the issue is surrounding loans for the tax assessment. If, in fact, there's contamination, you can't live in the home next to it. Because you cannot, taking showers is potential benzene inside of it, inside the oil, which can be absorbed in the skin. And you can't drink it if there is some that you don't know, don't realize that it is in there. It, it is a problem. And so that's another issue that, would the houses drop to zero value and in the result, you'd lose a large revenue for the town? So I guess I open it up to questions from the attendees. I'd like, if I can answer them. If not, my team, the team is here, as well as we'll come back to it.
Governor President. All right. So I have a couple of questions. One for you guys and then actually one for Jan, since you spent some time at the DEM. Is there a particular reason that DEM did not choose to enforce USTs for the under 1,100 gallons? Or has not looked at this? Or is this maybe something that DEM has looked at but decided not to?
I don't have the definitive answer to that. I think that this probably dates back to the time when underground storage tanks were first discovered to be a serious environmental threats. And it had to be prioritized in terms of where the greatest risk was that needed to be addressed first. That's my guess, to be honest. But I don't know that for a fact. I have the feeling, I actually have a call-in to people over there to find out what the current thinking is in the, in DEM. And I know that there are always two answers to that. One is what we think should be done. And the second one is whether we have the people to do it. So that's the problem at the state level as well.
Okay. And then, you know, just the only comment that I would have about the presentation. First off, you know, thank you for your work. I think it's, you know, great work. I'm glad that you're able to inform, you know, the residents of the town that this is an issue and hopefully more will come forward and disclose if they have one of these USTs. But the only thing from the town's perspective, if the liability rests strictly with the homeowner, that makes me a little reticent to do anything, especially in situations where it, this almost feels like we're essentially stepping over DEM because DEM refuses to address this issue in an area where they should. And, you know, I wouldn't want to put the town in between, you know, a fight between DEM and something that they want to regulate. You know, I think that it's something we should, you know, potentially bring to DEM's attention. Maybe we, you know, put forward something as a resolution, council resolution, that can go to DEM saying, hey, you need to look at this. But if they're already regulating everything else in this space, you know, the town doesn't have the expertise to regulate USTs. But DEM certainly does because they're already doing so for larger tanks. So, you know, I really think that it's something that we can assist you guys in getting DEM's attention on.
Well...
But I don't necessarily know that, that we'd be in a position, you know, both with knowledge base and then also on the fiscal end, to be able to regulate these ourselves.
Well, I look at DEM in that, the data call that I just received, three tanks, there was no indication of any type of testing being conducted on any tank. So they leave them in the ground, out of sight, out of mind. And I have to take back to you that example I gave you about Tiverton Four Corners. It would be the responsibility, not of the state of Rhode Island, but Tiverton to pay for, maybe you get federal funds to pay for water all the way down there for public water. That's the concern I have, too.
It is. Tony, that, that is the case? That Tiverton's on the hook for water in the event of a contamination by a homeowner?
Happened in Montgomery Street and Florence in 1987. Tiverton had to put the water in. They put in, the $5-million bond was required.
I'm gonna tell you, to me, again, and I understand there was some situation back then. I don't know if there was an obligation, the town just did that. But that liability doesn't lie, lie, lie to the town. And the reason for that, well, if somebody has, is not on, not on town water...
We don't know. Oh, okay.
The obligation really isn't there. Can I just address this for a second?
I was just gonna...
Because it gets, it gets to, I think, the heart of the question. And that, and I think this is really the basis of the presentation. As you can see in my memo, there is a state law on this, which is, to me, in the nature of an enabling statute, that allows the town to regulate these underground storage tanks that have been the subject of the presentation. And the state has conferred that power on the cities and towns. And to me, at some point, somebody, and I don't know who that was, made a decision that these tanks under 1,100 gallons, that'd be the responsibility of the towns to regulate if they so chose. And then over that amount, that would go over to the DEM. So you have the ability to do it under state law. The question is, is if you have this scheme, is there any liability for the town if there is a spill in either the UST wasn't regulated or the town was somehow negligent on that? Under federal law, and it drops down to state law, primarily liability is always on the homeowner or the property owner. If the town is negligent in any way, then it's a negligent action from there. And there could be damages. There could. But in this circumstance... Under federal law, and it drops down to state law, primarily liability is always on the homeowner or the property owner. If the town is negligent in any way, then it's a negligent action from there. And there could be damages. There could. But, in this circumstance, I'm going to make a suggestion to you all. The only thing that the town can do at this point is to beef up your current underground storage tank ordinance, which is on the books. It's basically a registration ordinance. There's no penalty there. You know, I, I think what you need to do here is get, this is a good presentation. But, you need to see what a regulatory scheme would look like so that you can see if this is something that, that you want to undertake to address the issue. So, I think the best thing to do is to refer this to Jan.
I was going to say you.
No, no, Jan. And I'll certainly.
I was trying to make him.
Well, I'll certainly, well, here's the thing. You know, it's, it's environmental, Jan has a background in it. He's very familiar with underground storage tanks. And I'll certainly help because we've already started with it. But, to me, the best thing to do here would be to say, "This is what an ordinance could look like. This is what other towns have done to address this issue. And this is what it would cost." Which is another reason why I think Jan should be involved.
No, we already have an ordinance.
You do, but it's just a registration ordinance. It does not, it doesn't go the whole nine yards, so to speak, on the 46-12.1-1.
I'd be glad to take on responsibility for follow-up. I want to point out one thing because Tom suggested that heating oil is excluded from what can be regulated. That's not the case. It's actually included in the definition, so.
Oh, no. What I was saying, excluded any heating oil for less than 1,100 gallons. I may have spoke, said it wrong because it says in this ordinance that, right here, this is directly from DEM's.
Right. So, actually, the town does have authority to address.
Old town, I apologize.
Heating oil in residential, right. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
I apologize.
I do think it's best to, you know, charge me to work with several people actually to figure out what the next step could be for the town. I think Tony is right that we do have an ordinance. It hasn't been used in a very, very long time. So, people haven't been registering either. Now, if I'm not mistaken, it's no longer legal to install underground storage tanks.
When we did that, we had the ordinance passage, you couldn't have put new ones in.
But, even so, we ought to have an up-to-date registration situation. And it's sort of concerning that we, we don't have that. And that's something we can do and should do. I also want to point out, the fire department certainly has jurisdiction over underground storage tanks and has been dealing with it on and off, I would say. But, we can look at what the role of the fire department could be. And I understand that we need to figure out, you know, what the implications are in terms of staff expenses, et cetera, et cetera. But, I also think we can talk with DEM. And finally, I think, I already have a call in to the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. It's always good to create incentives for people. And maybe there could be a low-interest loan program similar to what they have for septic systems that could actually create an incentive for people to do this rather than us just saying, you know, "You need to take it out in two years," which a little easier said than done.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Tom and the Conservation Commission. I know that they've been working on this for a really long time and it is an important issue. I also think that some of the folks who have underground storage tanks may not really be aware what their liability is. And maybe even in education campaign, and I'm sure you could find a Realtor or two who's sold a house where there's been an underground storage tank. They've taken the thing up and it's a $35,000 remediation fiasco. So, I think some of the people who have them, if they were aware that if they're not using them anymore, and in some cases, they may not be, they may still be, getting them out of the ground sooner than later may be in their own best financial interest while it's still relatively inexpensive to get it gone rather than letting it sit there and having a really significant expense at some time in the future. And, I do like Jan's idea of possibly talking to the infrastructure bank about the possibility of, you know, low-interest loan money to be able to do it for folks that needed to. And at least, you know, some portion of folks may voluntarily with a little help say, "You know, I, I think I'd rather get this gone sooner than later." I do think ultimately somewhere down the road, the best solution is to get rid of all of these underground storage tanks. There was another oil spill, an underground or oil tank spill at Nonquit School many years ago, which was the town's problem. And that was not inexpensive. But, I will tell you this, there were several wells nearby that were impaired. And to this day, there's one well in the area that still tests positive, almost 50 years later, still tests positive for traces of petroleum byproducts. So, it, it's not for a place that doesn't have public water everywhere. It, it's not a minor thing to have a significant spill that gets into a major vein in the bedrock that could have really disastrous consequences for a lot of people. So, thank you for all your work on this, Tom.
Madam President. Two questions. So, one, you said that there were some USTs that were abandoned and that that means they were filled with sand or cement?
They can do that. There's a way, you have to clean them. They have to be cleaned of all oil products. And the state said they will put a slurry in of perhaps a cement and sand together and hold it in place.
So, it stays in the ground?
It stays in the ground. But, the optimum way is if you'd want to take it out to see if it has leaked and migrated out from the tank to avoid, especially in a well area, we have public, private wells and public wells.
Okay.
But, the town, in certain instances, they will allow abandoned in place, but it's filled up, so if it, so it won't collapse as it rusts.
And cleaned, it sounds like what you said.
They have to clean it well.
Okay.
Has to be totally cleaned to somehow get in and clean up all, spray it with something inside and take out all of the residuals.
Okay. And the other question I have, and I don't know who could answer it, is like, it sounds like there are other towns that already have programs? Are you familiar with them in Rhode Island?
I thought there was some where Bristol may have some type of ordinance. But, I don't know for sure about those because I thought, I was hoping we would take them.
No, I understand that. But, I thought one of you guys said that you thought there was some town that did.
What I'd like to take, take a do, to take a look at, one of the things I'll do with Jan is do a survey of the communities to see if there are any regulations out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? So, I think what I'm understanding is we refer this to the town administrator. Yes, with the help of the town solicitor.
Fire chief.
And whatever resources that Jan needs. How's that? Could someone make that motion?
Can I suggest one other thing?
Yeah.
You should probably ask me to report back within a certain timeframe.
Oh, you want it timeframe? I just thought that I, I didn't know how long it was going to take.
Well, in fairness, because they have studied this so long and it is a pretty persuasive presentation, I think. It's not easy to do this, but I think setting some reasonable timeframe.
July 9th? Meeting at July 9th?
No, I would say six months, actually.
Okay. I don't know what you're asking. All right. Well, that's why I thought whenever you get it completed, I knew you wouldn't take more than a year, but, okay.
Before November though.
Before November.
Madam President, I'll make a, make a motion to refer the underground storage tanks regulation research to the administrator and the solicitor and whatever else internal resources they need. And ask the administrator to report back no later than six months from this meeting.
I thought you said before November.
By the second meeting in October.
Okay.
Second.
Means second, any further discussion?
Just, if we, if we do have a list already, is there any way to cross-reference it to any of the tax assessor information? They, they have heating type.
We're going to try to, I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Okay, thanks.
And I think Tom should rat on his friends that haven't disclosed their tanks.
I'd love to, but I wouldn't want to use the, but I, you know, the day after, excuse me, this is quick, the day after they, we pass on, there was a brand-new, probably 1,100-plus gallon tank in someone's yard. I call the building inspector, "Oh, he's just doing maintenance." So, I don't know what they're saying. There's nothing much I could do about it. You know how it happens.
Yes.
Yeah.
I won't say the name. I was very discreet about all of those things.
We'll get it off the record.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? I would also like to thank you and the Conservation.
Well, thank you very much.
A really good presentation. Thank you.
Hopefully this will bring closure to 31 years ago, but Netflix stopped. Have a great day.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. Advertised public hearing, CDPG 2017 grant application, second public hearing. First hearing was held in November. Council approval to file application.
Good evening, councilors. Christian Belden with Church Community Housing Corporation. As you may remember, I was just before you on April 23rd. At that time, the town held a second hearing and voted to submit the annual CDPG application. It, within that application, there was an activity for affordable housing development to create homeownership opportunities for Tiverton residents that are low and moderate income. And, but at that time, there weren't any specific properties or potential buyers identified. So, we, it was a $0 activity line item within that application. Since that time, we've found three buyers and executed three purchase and sales agreements for the remaining three affordable lots at Cotrell Farms. So, I'm back before you for this public hearing and then the later vote, hopefully so that you can approve a specific amount and the three specific properties. It's 425, 471, and 497 Cotrell Farm. And, the grant funding that we're requesting to build those three homes is $415,000 CDPG funding.
Any questions from the council before I open the public hearing? This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comment from the audience? Any comments? I'd like to now close the public hearing. Any questions from the council?
Just the date, I think it's 11/27/18. It should be 11/27/17. On the second page.
First hearing held 11, it says, it was held 11/9/2017 and then, or so, it was advertised 11/9/2017. It was held.
Yeah, I see what you're asking.
I can get a revised version of that.
No, it wasn't held November 27, 2018. We haven't.
That's not, that hasn't happened yet.
So, well, please, that's 17. Any further questions? I get to take a motion?
Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Church Community, the CDPG 2017 grant application for the properties subject to the date change on the form. And the amount of $415,000.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against, opposed?
Hard to make.
Five points. Thank you. Thank you. Now, the next two public hearings will be continued and I'll read them out. But, the only thing I'm asking, I think we should continue them to July 9th. And the reason for that, if we bring them to June 25th, we'll have three public hearings again like last Monday. And we were here for an unbelievably lengthy meeting. So, I'd like to separate these two to July 9th and then we'll have the outdoor seating at the end of June and that may, may be very long. So, it's the planning board discussion and, the planning board discussion in action on proposed amendment to Article 2, Article 5, and Article 6 of the zoning ordinance to add a definition for accessory structure and alter the dimensional regulations applicable thereto, continued and I'm suggesting July 9th.
Do you want me to second that or?
Would you make the motion, please?
Yeah. Motion to continue what you just read from July, from June 25th to July 9th meeting.
Is that all right, Tony? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion regarding that? All those in favor? Unanimous. And the next one is the planning board discussion in action on proposed amendment to Article 21, Section 10 Affordable Housing Provision to Include a Fee-in-Lew Option. And I'd like that to continue until July 9th.
So moved.
Second.
I think it's July 9th, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do you want to like move it to maybe even like the next meeting after that? Because we had a lengthy discussion on accessory structures.
Yeah, we did too. So, what you're suggesting is separating all of them? I have more coming up that I'll just space in between.
No, I think that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah. And Joe is right, they, they all took an hour or more, more.
Yeah. And if there's other ones, it might be variances, you know, sound variances and stuff. You can filter in weddings and stuff like that, but I don't, is there other zoning ordinance changes or?
There's not a lot. These were the ones we have to finish.
Madam President. I'd like to amend my motion from July 9th to the second meeting in July.
Which would be the 23rd.
23rd. Second that.
You second the amendment?
Yep.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Boom. Moving on. Love it.
Walgreen Eastern Company Incorporated DBA Rite Aid Number 10235677 Main Road Corporate Change of Ownership. Request approval of tobacco dealer license and holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Anyone here from this company? Nancy?
No, they were informed, but it's a just change of ownership.
Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the tobacco dealer license and holiday license for Walgreen Eastern Company Incorporated DBA Rite Aid Number 10235677 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Advertised show cause hearing, Petroleum Storage License, Said Hassan Afsal. I probably florded that. A1 Petroleum DBA Stonebridge Gas, 861 Main Road. The solicitor?
Okay, the first question is, is there anyone here from A1 Petroleum doing business as Stonebridge Gas? Is Mr. Said Hassan Afsal here? Madam President, the record should reflect that the licensee or representative is not here. But, we do have Mr. Mello, who is the town's fire marshal here. I'm going to recommend that an oral proof of claim be made in regard to this license. I'm going to, I'm actually going to say that. We need to swear. Do you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Tom, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I know everybody knows this, but for record purposes, state your name.
Thomas Mello.
And where are you employed?
Tiverton Fire Department.
And what is your position with the Tiverton Fire Department?
I'm the fire marshal.
How long have you held that position?
About two and a half years now.
In your capacity as the town's fire marshal, have you had occasion to inspect the premises at 861 Main Road doing business as Stonebridge Gas and owned by A1 Petroleum?
Yes, I have.
And what did you observe when you were there?
Violations of self-serve versus full-serve.
Well, specifically, what, what was going on that you observed?
So, they were allowing people to do self-serve at the pumps rather than full-serve as required.
Okay, what's the difference?
Full-serve requires an attendant be out there and people stay in their vehicles and the attendant pumps the gas for them. It's a whole different safety suppression system has to be in place if it's a self-serve station.
Is greater safety and fire suppression services at, at the self-serve?
Self-serve. Self-serve will have a full suppression system. By Rhode Island fire laws, there's a full suppression system that goes on the overhead canopy at all self-serve stations.
So for this particular establishment, motorists were pumping their own gas at a full-serve station without those protections?
That's correct.
In your opinion, is that a public safety hazard?
Yes.
Did you advise the owner?
Over eight times in the past three years.
Did you advise the operator?
Yes.
And what did the operator say?
In one of the meetings that I had with one of the operators, they said, "Do you expect us to go outside and pump gas for people?"
Okay. Okay. And what are you recommending that the town council, as the board of licenses, do with this particular license?
In conversations with the state fire marshal's office, the recommendation is to suspend their license for four weeks.
And did you have a conversation recently with the operator, Mr. Afzal?
Yes.
Did he say that he was closing the business?
He said as of June 30th, his lease was up, so he would do the best he could to comply, but didn't expect to be able to.
Okay. Okay. Does the board have any questions for Tom?
Anyone? No.
Thank you. They have to reapply for a new license.
That was my question. No, I do have a question. So we give them four weeks. If they don't comply, they're closed.
That's correct, yes. And furthermore, because there has been some indication that there will be a new operator at this site, that new operator would be required to apply for a new license. The old license could not transfer out. And I think that Tom is correct in asking for a four-week, actually revocation of this license. If the operator can demonstrate that he would operate this establishment in a safe manner for the public, that would be a different story. But I do think that the four weeks is warranted here. With notice to the owner and operator.
Any questions from the council? Council hearing.
So is he closed as of now? Or is he still able to run a business until June 30th?
Well, and I'm going to say this. It's my understanding that the business is closed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. However, if you don't take this action, he could open up tomorrow.
And it'd be interesting.
Because he has a license. So that's why I...
He closed on his own this morning.
Yes. But I agree with the recommendation of the fire marshal. I think it's prudent to take that course, so the operator can't reopen.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the council?
I'm going to refer it to the clerk.
I could entertain a motion?
Madam President.
Councilor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendations of the fire marshal and the solicitor and impose a four-week revocation for the license for petroleum storage for Said Hassan Afzal, A1 Petroleum DBA Stonebridge Gas at 861 Main Road, and provide notice to both the owner and the operator.
Second.
Any further?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appointments and resignations. Library Board of Trustee, three-year term, two vacancies. Kim Sutherland, 199 Perry Avenue, new appointment.
Madam President, that is listed. That is the terms of a library board of trustee. However, there are two unexpired terms, so this appointment would actually fill an unexpired term till October 15, 2018. And maybe we could just put it on for three years at that point. Because I can't go longer than the three-year and it has to be in October.
Right. So October 15, if she still wants to do it.
That's interesting.
Right. Kim, if you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position?
Sure. I have lived in Tiverton most of my life and have gone to Essex Library since I was a little girl. I am an avid reader. I'm a writer. I am a teacher, and I am a mom. And I have had occasions to visit the library under all those hats. I think that the library is a jewel and the crown of this town, and I would like to be a steward to help bring the library forward.
Any questions for Kim? I could entertain a motion?
Madam President.
Go ahead, Trish.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kim Sutherland.
We have to waive our normal procedure on this, right?
Oh, yeah, do we?
Yeah.
Well, there's only one applicant, and it's only... There's two openings.
Yeah, so it's fine.
So we don't have to waive the normal procedure of kicking it off till the next meeting?
Not on this vacancy.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're by the book.
No, good job.
Just one question. Are you a special needs teacher today?
Yes.
And do you work for the town?
No, I do not.
Okay. Just wanted to verify.
Yeah, I know. She does. There you go. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kim Sutherland to the Library Board of Trustees to fulfill a term...
Till October 15, 2018.
October 15, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Say hi to your phone.
Balltime politics, 11.
DPW Director William Anderson, who isn't here, but I'm sure Jan's going to do this. Approval of 2017 RITM, RITPETS, I'm sorry, MS4 report for submission to RITN. Jan, are you checking this?
Yes, this is the report that needs to be submitted to DEM annually. It was prepared by our consultants together with Bill. In your packet, you had a summary of what transpired in the past year, including work that was undertaken to deal with stormwater in particular. And I hope that provides you with enough information. The report itself is much lengthier and has more specifics in it. If anyone wants a copy of it, I can provide that. I recommend that you approve.
Any discussion from the council? Questions?
Madam President.
Council Edwards?
Is that report in digital format?
Yes.
Would you be able to email it to me?
Do you? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2017 RITM, RITPETS, MS4 report for submission to Rhode Island DEM.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Jan, if you could also email me a copy?
Okay.
Thank you.
Tiverton Fire Department Chief Lloyd requests approval of transfers to cover overtime needs from account 3310-5101 personnel for $10,000. Account 3310-5111 EMS incentive for $2,000. Account 3310-5168 clothing allowance for $1,983.02. Account 3310-5107 paid holidays for $3,8979. Account 3310-5110 educational allowance for $153.50. Account 3310-6923 chief seminars for $43.74, $43.74, totaling $14,570.05 to account 3310-5104 overtime. Any discussion? Jan?
Thank you. And the chief couldn't be here tonight. He had to be in a different meeting together with other staff. I thought maybe Tom was going to address it. But we have in your packet a memo explaining. I know that there has been quite a bit of discussion of how much overtime was being incurred by the fire department. I do believe that a very serious effort has been made to bring that under control. In the memo, it's explained that the chief has been able to hire two firefighters laterally, and also that some people have come back from sick leave. On the other hand, they had hoped to hire a third lateral, and that person chose to go to a different department. So that was a little bit of a setback to which this additional overtime is to be attributed. The good news is that this can be covered within the budget of the fire department itself instead of requiring a different transfer.
Madam President.
I would approve. I would suggest approval, recommend approval.
I'd like to make a motion to move money from accounts 3310-5101, 3310-5111, 3310-5168, 3310-5107, 3310-5110, 3310-6923, in an amount totaling $14,570.05 to account 3310-5104 overtime.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Town administrator approval of transfer of $6,000 from account 1060-5175 part-time building inspector to account 1050-7159 litigation.
Thank you. We were having a negative balance in that account already. For some reason, we seem to be incurring lots of litigation costs. So additional money is needed in that account. We do have money in the part-time building inspector account that hasn't been used this year. So the suggestion is that we take that money out of that account at this point. I will say that I expect an additional transfer may be necessary before the end of the fiscal year, actually. This is not the last of it yet.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Council Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of $6,000 from account 1060-5175 part-time building inspector to account 1050-7159 litigation.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? There's a request for proposals. Councilor Hilton, DPW Director, DPW Director, award of contracts for Grinnell Beach renovation, concrete sidewalks, and pavilion slab. And we just received that by...
Yeah. Madam President, we really just got this, or we got this in on Friday, but it really took till today to be able to review some of these prices and try and make a decision. Based on these items that we bid for, tonight, we're asking only to award one item off of the bid list. And again, just to refresh everybody's memory, in the formal advertised bidding process, we received no bids. So under Rhode Island law, we were allowed to go out and solicit bids from various contractors. I know that at least three were contacted. Only one chose to submit a bid. But for tonight, we'd like to award the contract work for, on page two, under alternative bid prices, A and B, which you can see are the same prices at the end. It's only going to be one of those things, but it is to be determined, since they're the same price from a design point of view, which one we go with, to John Rocchio Corporation.
Tony, this is okay?
Well, under 45-55-6, yes. It's my understanding that originally, when the request or proposal went out, it was the option for the bidders to bid separately on these items. Because of that, and because no bids came back, I think actually Bill did the right thing by going out for a so-called competitive negotiation.
So you want us to approve both?
Well, I think you can approve $90,720, and then you decide... Yeah, approve the number, and then the committee will decide between the two. They're the same price from a design point of view, which one?
Either the broom finish or the...
For a total of $90,720.
So you're only going to pick one of those?
Yes.
Madam President.
So what we're really asking is to just, you know...
Approve the amount, and then later on, you'll determine which one.
And it'll be one of those two things. They're the identical.
Councilor Hilton, do we have $90,720 to pay for this? And where are we going to get the remainder of the work that was asked for the bid spec from?
So, yes, we do. As part of the grant and private funds that were raised. As far as the other things, we're going to Plan B. We have some alternatives, various alternatives in mind. We're going to reach out to possibly, we may rebid this, and we may reach out to some smaller shops that would be more interested in doing the smaller pieces. That big slab is, it's a complicated pour. It's not for everybody. It's going to require a construction company with a certain amount of expertise, and we may find that we get bids on the smaller pieces of it. There may also be some opportunity for us to do some in-house work, too. We'll be creative, but we'll find a way to get it done. But yes, we do have the money for this slab.
How much money do we have left in that account? The only reason I ask is because I know we're doing a lot of this stuff piecemeal, and I understand that there's a reason for that, because we needed to conserve the money. We weren't sure how much we're going to raise. It's just the only question I have is, going into a construction project, I would have hoped that we would have identified sort of everything we wanted to do, known exactly what it was going to cost us. And then now we're getting whacked with some of the sticker shock stuff. That's got me a little concerned.
Well, actually, no. This bid is a little bit higher than what our estimate was, but frankly, it's not that much higher than our original estimate was. And so far, our estimates have been pretty much on target. You know, the slab price is a little bit higher, but not by a whole lot. The other components, on this bid from this particular company, they're a little high, but that might be because these are sort of smaller jobs, and sometimes when things are smaller, you don't have quite as much interest in them. But I'm not sure I could quote a number off of the top of my head, but I can tell you right now that the treasurer could assure you that we are nowhere near cost overruns or not going to have all the funds necessary to complete this project.
Just out of curiosity, not that it really matters for this, but what was the original estimate for all this work?
On this slab?
Yeah.
The original estimate for broom finish, not the aggregate finish, but the original estimate for the broom finish was $60,000, and their number came in at 75. You know, remember, the estimates were done when we were putting together the DEM grant application. That was a couple of years ago. The price has, you know, steel's gotten more expensive, the rebar costs more than it did back then, things have gone up. But it's not...
Trade wars and all that stuff.
Yeah. It's not completely out of the realm compared to what we estimated. And frankly, a number of the things that we estimated, almost everything except for this, has come in at a lower number than what we estimated in the original planning of this.
So we're going to be okay with $30,000 more on the approval than was estimated?
I promise you, I wouldn't ask it if we weren't. Yeah, we are. Because, you know, we have been, we've been really lucky. We've had incredible members of the community step forward and have donated materials that we thought we were going to have to buy. I mean, it's been great. So we're in really good shape, actually.
I could entertain a motion?
I just don't want to overpay for the other things. So we'll look for other options on some of the items, some of the other items.
Madam President.
Council Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of the contract to John Rocchio Corporation under the alternate bid prices for a grand total of $90,720 for the supply and installation of a 45-by-90-foot, six-inch-thick slab with a finish to be determined by the committee.
Do I have a second? Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Madam President, if it would, at some point when we have it scheduled, it's not too busy, I'm more than happy to give everybody an update on the finances, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, you could sense... Yeah, or, I mean, you could send something out, too. I mean, we may very well have it and it's probably in a pile in my house, so...
Okay. We'll schedule something when... Probably in July. Okay. Town Administrator, announce.
Thank you, Madam President. I probably should have more announcements, but I only have one that I was asked to make about a planned flag burning ceremony or flag retirement ceremony by the Boy Scouts, troop number 4218. Flag retirement ceremony at Tiverton Town Hall on Flag Day, June 14th, at 6:00 P.M. to honor Tiverton's first responders. I just wanted to let people know that that's happening this week.
Thank you. Council announcements. I do have an announcement. We... I have talked with the Charter Commission. Our original date of June 19th was not going to work for the solicitor. We found out later. And I believe you all got an email to ask if you can make it June 20th. I know I heard from some... Joan, can you make it?
Yeah, I missed the third sentence. I just automatically assumed that it was the 20th.
Okay. So, it's June 20th. I talked to Rob Colton today. They will be submitting some of their finished work to us June 15th. They're trying to... They're trying to decide which ones they want to come with us first, what's more important to them, and then go down the list. So, they will be submitting some stuff to us on June 15th. And they will probably give us some on the Monday, too, because they're going to work on it that weekend. We will not receive all of it, but I told them that was fine. We needed to stop making decisions and talk about some of this. So, the minute I get it, I'll have Nancy give you all of it on June 15th. And he assures me that I will receive something on June 15th. Any questions?
Madam President.
It'll be June 20th. We're trying to make it here at Town Hall. It will be here. The zoning meeting was supposed to be here, but we asked them to go to the senior center. Oh, it's canceled. Okay.
Seven o'clock?
It'll be seven o'clock.
Just a quick question on that. And I apologize for not knowing this off the top of my head because I know we discussed this at the last meeting. But did we not say we needed everything by a specific date?
Well...
I just... I'm worried about getting things piecemeal and then having something be slid in the glass, you know?
We did talk about everything. They have some approved. They're still trying... They're still making decisions on others. They are trying to kind of take them all and compact them, really. So, I told them whatever you have from June 15th. And I thought you would all agree we should start looking at it. There's 80 some right now, guys. So, let's...
Down from 126, so that's good.
Well, there might be... I'm saying 80 some, but it might be 126. I'm not sure. So, I asked them...
I think they're trying to get it down to 20 or 30.
They're trying to get it down to 20 or 30. So, I asked them... Yeah. I asked them to at least submit some stuff because this is going to be a long process and we're hoping to get this on the November election. And we have to run public hearings and it has to be submitted for the ballot in August. So, at least we can start this progress and go from there.
I have one final question. In the event that their commission... That Charter Review Commission terminates before they're able to whittle this number down, obviously, this is a very important piece of work and it's our job. So, perhaps we could just request that if they are unable to come up with a final list, that they submit us everything that they discussed that was heard in front of the commission so that we can make those determinations. Because I'm concerned that we're going to get into a situation where, you know, they're going to run over, they're going to start looking for extensions or something along those lines. And, you know, we have a deadline that we have to adhere to.
I spoke with Rob. He was very cooperative. He said that he will get as many to us as possible. And they were still in discussion to try to whittle this down. So, I have to say it was a positive discussion. So, we'll just hope for the best June 20th. And then we'll go from there. Does everyone agree?
It's at the Town Hall?
Yes, it'll be here. Any other announcements from the town council? Councilwoman?
Congratulate the girls... Tiverton High Girls softball team. They won the state championship.
Yes. A big congratulations. And I'd like to congratulate all the high school graduates. Joan and I were there. It was a wonderful ceremony outside, first time in many, many years, and they did a really good job.
And like to thank the school committee for inviting us.
Yes. Thank you, school committee, for inviting us. Uh... Don't worry. No, I asked him. He said... You missed it.
He doesn't have announcements.
He usually has nothing.
I only have one quick one. But I think if you're going to be on these Charter-proposed amendments, you might want to start thinking of what dates in July you would want your public hearings because it gets difficult last minute to schedule some. So, maybe by the next meeting, you could think...
We have to advertise 10 days in advance.
It's a public hearing, but we don't...
It's a public hearing, but there's no requirements for advertising.
Okay.
To be advertised.
All right. But there's no requirements. So, Nancy, we'll discuss it at the next meeting. And I was thinking...